And then Sweet Luke, who we have taken care of since he was an itty-bitty-bitty baby, was just accepted into Circus and tomorrow he'll have his first day at ACC. Luke Chavez. And this is what they looked like the night I got sworn in, which was six years ago. And you saw us do emergency shoe repair. I was wearing the highest heels I own to try to still be taller than my grandchildren tonight. But it means so much to me that they are here and I appreciate everything that they've done. It's not always fun to have your... And my grandma name is Noni. And one of the things that I'll get to do, my husband Charlie, who has made his second city council meeting by being here tonight. My husband has been worried about me, "What are you gonna do when you're not mayor anymore?" And one of the things I said was, "I get to go back to being full-time Noni." So with that, if you will please stand, these young people will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
And if you would please remain standing, I am very honored that our chaplain and pastor Phil Woods is going to lead our invocation and we're gonna take some photos. Thank you, thank you, thank you Colin. Pastor Woods?
Father God, we thank you for a beautiful day. We thank you for the bountiful blessings that you have bestowed upon Bastrop. And tonight, we ask for the guidance of your Holy Spirit, for our mayor and our councilman as they move through the agenda that is before them. We pray for wisdom from above. We pray for all of our department heads throughout the city, every one of our employees. And Lord, our police and fire department, tonight, we lift them up and just pray safety over them. And again, we want to thank you for your bountiful blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Madam Mayor? Amen. Yes, sir.
I would like to go on record commending you. As your term comes to an end, along with many others, want to express our sincere gratitude for a job well done. As you return to public office, may you be blessed and find favor in whatever you pursue. Thank you for your heartfelt service to our community and many blessings upon you. And congratulations to the new council people today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Woods. Thank you, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, you can be seated. There will be a second part of our invocation tonight. My heart and spirit lifted when Sumai made my phone ring this afternoon and Hannibal is gonna play something for us this evening.
Thank you for this opportunity. You have always struck me as a person who care about the welfare of the people in the community. I hope that that tradition continues. But I wanted to read a poem for our country. And it's entitled "Tyranny." His tyranny was dropped like an anchor upon the will of the people. The longer they waited to free themselves of it, the deeper it sank into their muddy fear. Seaweed and coral covered the rusting links of its chain and made it easier for many to forget that it was buried so deeply into their lives. Few of priceless courage tried with pick and spade to keep the anchor in view, only to be betrayed by the many who no longer chose to tend the fields with sickle and song, but found it easier to yield to the gleam of fixed bayonets and sunless graves. Nature got tired of it all and sent a storm whose power was so great, it even influenced the courage of the disbelievers and sent them rushing with hands and sticks to free the anchor from their lives. It like cancer, left undone, killed them by the millions instead of one.
What a, what a talent and what a blessing to have you in our community. So that gets us to my mayor's report. And Colin, I have a couple of things before we get started. One of which I am very happy to share with council and share with the public that House Bill 5012 was filed without signature today, which means the following: it didn't get vetoed, but it didn't get signed, but it goes into effect on September 1st. So our House Bill 5012, that council asked for assistance in getting that done, that is a great thing for the community. So we were, I found that out at 11:48 a.m. this morning, so I was super happy about that. I also wanted to take just a quick moment and talk about the council people that I have had the opportunity to share with. I've shared this dais with 12 other individuals, some for as short as five weeks with Council Member Meyer, and two council members that I was on the dais with for five years. Both of them ended up being mayor pro temp for a period of time, and that is Mayor Pro Temp Bill Peterson and Mayor Pro Temp Drusilla Rogers. Served with both of them for five years and the other nine people for varying amounts of time in between that. I've learned something from each and every one of them. I've enjoyed my time being able to be the mayor of this community and I really look forward to seeing all the great things that are gonna happen in the future. So with that, we'll go, Colin, we can jump right on in. We're gonna start in the upper left-hand corner. This was the Memorial Day service. I know there were several council members that attended that, but I have to tell you a personal story about this. You see in the bottom, the third picture, that is the Spooner family. And they are family to me. They're Ruth Spooner, who's pictured in that picture. Her mom and my husband's mom were sisters, so they're cousins. When I was elected mayor in 2017, the Memorial Day event was the first public event that I did, and Carl Spooner led the pledges at that event. And Mr. Spooner passed away and at this event, his family laid the wreath in honor of the veterans that had fallen. So it was really quite a closure to that event. Just below that, Colin, we'll go below and then I guess kind of back up and around. I attended the March for Jesus, and this is not a very good picture, but the one I was like, "Oh, I need to remember to take a picture." So there were several of us, we had a great time, enjoyed some good music, and I'm sure that Mayor Pro Temp Kirkland may mention that as well. Next to that, I attended the Farm Street Opry. It was wonderful, as it always is. And just above that was my photo from Music Man and compliments to Council Member Lee, who was in that play. Just an outstanding job. Our opera house has really brought some great performances and it's been really fun to be a part of that. Then, just to the right of that, that was me voting in the runoff election. And former Mayor Kestles saw me at an event later that evening and he said, "I was dressed like I was ready to be on vacation." And I guess that's because I knew I was getting ever closer, but was trying to encourage... That was a picture that I posted to encourage folks to vote in the runoff election. And then, Colin, let's go to the right. This is Dr. Hen, and he leads the Bastrop ISD mentoring program. And I've been a mentor the last several years, and they did a thank you breakfast. And I'm always game for a breakfast taco when I can grab one real quick, so I appreciate the ISD doing that. Carol Kaiser retired, and that was a quick picture from the Historic Society recognizing Carol and all the work that she's done. And then the Genesis picture and the other picture, I attended not one, but two of the BISD graduations. So it was great to have graduation and see all those kids starting their future. And then the picture just below that, Colin, is half of the 4th graders from Emile. And I want to call out and thank Ms. Julie Flanagan, who has been a 4th grade teacher for a long time at Emile. And I had half the 4th graders one week and the other half of the 4th graders the following week. And we talk about municipal government and the role of the mayor, and I make, this is the group of people that I always make them raise their hand and swear an oath that they will register to vote when they're 18 and that they will always vote in every election because that is your voice. And I'm a firm believer, if you don't vote, you should limit your criticism, but that doesn't always take place. If you go to the next page, Colin, I owe Classic Bank an apology. They celebrated their 15 years and I ended up with a personal conflict, so I was not able to attend their ribbon cutting. But a shout-out to Brittany Ross, I know that they had a great event that day. And the Last Duel in Bastrop was put on by the Bassdrop County Bar Association. It raises money for the Bobby Jenkins Scholarship Fund, and I attended that on Sunday and it was really great. And if you missed it this year, you ought to make sure that you attend next year. And then the other thing that I want to announce is that yesterday at Commissioner's Court, the inter-local agreement for Pine Forest 6 was unanimously approved. And that is on our consent agenda tonight, council. And if it is your pleasure with, when we sign it, then that will be completed. I did go to the budget meeting yesterday and here we are tonight. I'm not done till the 20th, and so the next page is the few things that I need to still take care of. I will be at a CAPCOG executive meeting tomorrow morning. I want to remind everyone, there is a town hall meeting on Thursday, and that agenda has been amended and because we've moved it over to the Convention Center. So don't come to council chambers, that will be at the Convention Center. And council, you know that it's on your calendar and I want to invite the public, there are a couple murals that were done at Bob Bryant Park, and we'll be doing a ribbon cutting on that at 11 a.m. That is on Friday. And we'll talk about the Juneteenth and the celebration here in just a minute, but that will be taking place on Saturday. Monday, offices will be closed. This is the first year that Juneteenth has been a holiday for the city of Bastrop and the offices will be closed. And then on June 20th, in addition to what's listed, I found out today that I will, there is a very good chance there will be a Carts ribbon cutting that I will also participate in that day. And we will be canvassing the votes and you guys will be swearing in your new mayor. And that ends my mayor's report. And with that, Council Member Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Bastrop. So I attended the Memorial Day celebration. I thought it was a beautiful way to start my day off from work and everything else that I had going on. It was actually my first time going. I felt it was very respectful and it was an honorable way to remember those who lost their lives fighting for our country. I want to say congratulations to our mayor-elect, Lyle Nelson, who is here. And also give a quick shout-out to Doc Jackson, who's been around in local government here in Bastrop for a long time. He ran a great campaign and I hope that he will continue to do good things in Bastrop and our community. I attended the Sit and Sit with SIL, Planning and Zoning Meeting, and then our Library Board Meeting, and I'm wearing my library shirt for the summer reading program. There's a lot going on at the Bastrop Public Library. Their summer reading program has begun, and if you go to our city website and click on the library link, you will see a calendar full of June of activities for the kids to do. So there's nothing that kids won't find to do at the library right now, from gardening, even adults, there's a calendar full of events, and it's in the AC. So I encourage people to go out and check out our library through August. Those events are running through August. While I was doing the Music Man, I kind of snuck away and enjoyed some of the Pride events. I got in trouble for doing so, but I snuck out from the intermission and got to take, pop into some of the Pride events and had a really good time out there in the street and with the vendors. My acting career has again ended. The Music Man is over. I don't know what to do with all the free time that I have, so I have about 10 home projects going on. But I really enjoyed the Music Man. I don't think I realized the monumental thing that I was participating in. It was their largest cast. Well-loved play by many, and everyone there, every crowd, every night, was just amazing. So first, we started out with like, "Oh my God, we'd have 10 shows," and then it was the last night and we were all wanting to cry. So love the opera house. I went and saw the Last Duel this past Sunday, enjoyed that as well. And then, just to touch on Juneteenth, this is, Juneteenth weekend is coming up for Bastrop. Elgin had theirs, and I had the opportunity or I had an invite to attend an event in Austin at Pioneer Farms, which is a little colony that was built in North Austin. And what, they take, they take homes and things of African-American history and take them to their farm that are impending demolition. They're gonna be demolished or removed or destroyed, and they go and find them and restore them. So they just moved a home of a family called the Doxen family that is part of the Freedom Colonies and established him and his family in Austin. He became a businessman in Austin and created Freedom Colonies for Blacks after the emancipation. So that home is now on that property and they did a ceremony there. So it was very, it was very uplifting. It made me think a lot about, the focus was on our personal history. We know about Black history, but how did we get here? How did I end up in Bastrop? And who were my ancestors? And so a lot of the focus is on finding out that history for your own. So I really enjoyed that and I'm looking forward to the celebrations here in Bastrop, and I hope that you guys will take some time and come out to some of those events. They've worked hard on that committee to put that together for you guys. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Council Member Lee. Council Member Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I so enjoy going around to as many things as I can and meeting new people, and I know a lot of you already, but it's such a pleasure to be out in the city attending the events. And I try to make as many as I can, and then I forget what I've done, but my husband always reminds me. So I was making my list yesterday, he said, "Mm-mm, you forgot this and this and this." So I think he keeps a calendar probably better than I do on what I've done. But I did very much enjoy the Memorial Day ceremony at the Fairview Cemetery. It was very touching, just very wonderful experience. So I enjoyed being there with all the people who attended. And I also did attend the, with Sylvia at El Nueva. And if y'all have never attended that, it is really a great time to just get your questions answered. Sylvia's, she'll answer anything you want. She can answer whatever you need to know. She's got all the info for you. So I encourage everyone in the community, when those come and you have the opportunity to take advantage of that. I also went to the, because I can't get away from planning and zoning, obviously, now, I guess I still think I need to go to their meetings, so I did attend their meeting at the end of the month. I did go to Fisherman's Park, and it was so nice for the Pride Festival to see how many families and really fun events they had going on. It was very well-attended. This year, I went last year, and I will say, I'm not really sure what the percentage, but I do think there were maybe two to three times more attendance this year, which was really great to see. So I encourage everybody to always take advantage of these wonderful festivals the city has and the people put on. The Bastrop Chamber of Commerce luncheon, I attended, and Becky with the chamber always has a wonderful speaker and has a great program, so I enjoy those every month. And last night, I came and attended the BEDC budget meeting, and it was very informative. So I encourage everyone, if you're not gonna come here, at least catch some of the meetings that are streamed because it's really good information that you can all benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Meyer. Mayor Pro Temp Kirkland?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the March for Jesus, and you could just barely make out in the photograph that was posted up there on the far right-hand side of the band. I was up there playing bass guitar. And that was a fun, fun thing. We had 12 songs prepared and played as the people started marching up the street there and then played songs, six songs kind of in the middle and then three more at the end as people were leaving. It's a really good day, and it's the first time we'd ever played outdoors or kind of done anything like that outside of a church building. And it took three days for my hearing to recover, but you know, it was very, very loud. I attended a number of board meetings, Parks Board, BEC, also the Sit with SIL. Attended the Hunter's Crossing Local Government Open House that was on a Saturday morning. Also attended the Memorial Day Ceremony and honestly, I feel honored to be there because it is such a solemn and amazing thing. I will also give you a pro tip, that if you walk around in the grass, you may go home, not in the grass right there at the front that's mowed, but like in the back, you might go home with 20 sugar bites. And you could ask me how I know that. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Plunkett?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make mine quick. This weekend, went to the Last Duel, and I just wanted to congratulate David Bragg and all the other attorneys who put that together. I mean, that's a great cause for, I think it's over $20,000 or $80,000 in scholarships they've, they've given out over the years. And just excellent cause and an excellent show that they put on. Obviously, I want to congratulate Lyle Nelson and Doc Jackson for running a very honorable campaign. And honestly, I think, you know, people complain about 17%-ish for a, for, you know, for a local election, but for a runoff, and you know, that's the only thing going on. I think they did a great job getting...
Yeah, unfortunately, it's impressive, right? It's an impressive number, it's unfortunate that it's that small, so...
But, of course, I went to a lot of meetings too and all that, so, thank you.
Council Member Crouch?
Yes, I attended the Memorial Day service too, and I, we, Andrea and I've been here for 10 years, and that's one of the best things that we go to, I think. It's just, it's so respectful for everyone there. It's just, it's a really good event, and this year was extra special with Ms. Spooner and your family. So I got to do that. Congratulations to Lyle Nelson and Doc Jackson too, same 17%. Doesn't seem like it's a lot, but it's a lot. And I'm glad everybody turned out and it was a great race, and congratulations, Lyle. And I attended the BEDC meetings on Facebook, so that's a lot easier than in my lounger versus sitting in here. So it's, it's easy, anybody can go to those, or these meetings on Facebook, or watch them many times, so those are great. I'm gonna miss the Juneteenth. It's my dad's 88th birthday party and his 70th year class reunion in Lockhart. So I'm gonna be there for that, and I'm gonna miss most of the Juneteenth stuff here this weekend. So I feel bad for that because I really liked that event too, but my dad's just gonna get 188th birthday, so I'm gonna be there for that. And I've done a lot of homework for our town hall meeting on Thursday. So whoever can come to the town hall meeting, we encourage you to come and sit for that and then express everything that you've got. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, we're on item 4C, city manager's report.
Everything they did and my list. So we have a lot going on this last month. As the mayor mentioned, Pine Forest 6, the ILA, is on consent agenda. That's taken us a little bit to do, but what that, that opens up about 300 to 360 residential development lots east of the industrial park. So get ready for those, and the work that we are doing in the industrial park and that entire development area will open up that development, and Bastrop just continues to grow and grow and grow. I know, because my phone did not stop ringing, over the Pearl River, over the trees that came off behind the McCoys, we are aware. There is a couple of things. I will take the city's blame for the parts of the process that broke in that there is a land disturbance permit that was issued, but that didn't match up with the tree mitigation that they did. Shame on the developer for, and the project manager for not also marrying those two things. There is over 1 point, almost 1.1 million dollars of tree mitigation that is due for what they cleared on that property. And I just want the community to know, there is mitigation. We do understand, there will be trees that will be planted back, and then we will offset. For now, we have gotten fiscal security, meaning before they move any further, before anybody gets a certificate of occupancy, we will have a bond in place that will guarantee that the residents will have some protection and that we will put those trees back in areas where they are critically important. As I say all of the time, we can talk about financial sustainability when we talk about development, but there's environmental sustainability too that is necessary. We've identified the process issue, so we're addressing, we're addressing that as well. The PDD, Plan Development District, it was held at Planning Commission, then we had a workshop. It will be the subject of town hall, more than likely. And we continue to move forward. And that truly, as I've stated, is my best effort at Switzerland at trying to manage both ends of the development spectrum and be able to be flexible and malleable and still let things go through a particular process to get us to a development completion. In my Hattis Economic Development, we do, we are moving forward. There was a company who did purchase the Jamco Building. We are, it is a manufacturing company. They will be providing parts for said industry up the road in Taylor. And that also goes part and parcel with us finishing out the industrial park. That is another capital project that we'll talk about next council meeting. So things are blowing and going. We have continued meeting with the engineers to make those projects happen, to get the movie studio project underway, to get the lift station moved and to get all of that, all of those pieces fit together and South Street completed. We are finalizing our process improvement project. I have a draft report. It is of no surprise to anybody what is in the draft report. Is that, she timed me out, that's it.
And you're done.
It's no surprise what's in the draft report, and I think you'll hear a lot of that at the town hall. And so now that we've sort of gathered information, it's kind of time to give it air, give it lights, and open up the dialogue to the rest of the community. And I know there's some pain points, and I know some of that will be emotional and evoke some hurt feelings tomorrow, but, or Thursday, but we're gonna get through it. Balancing Act and Taxpayer Receipt is live on the website, and so if you've not seen that, it is your chance to have an input into the city's general fund budget. You get to have a say as to whether police, fire, parks, and those things that are affected by the general fund need to be moved up or down to balance the city budget. There's also a little item called Taxpayer Receipt. You enter the value of your home and it'll tell you where your pieces of that dollar go to. There's a negative number there when you see administration. It's not because I'm giving money back to the city, it's because there are water, sewer, BP&amp;L, all of the other entities pay into that fund as well to help balance that budget. And I know there's some pain points, and I know some of that will be emotional and evoke some hurt feelings tomorrow, but, or Thursday, but we're, we're going to get through it. Balancing Act and Taxpayer Receipt is live on the website, and so if you've not seen that, it is your chance to have an input into the city's general fund budget. You get to have a say as to whether police, fire, parks, and those things that are affected by the general fund need to be moved up or down to balance the city budget. There's also a little item called Taxpayer Receipt. You enter the value of your home, and it'll tell you where your pieces of that dollar go to. There's a negative number there when you see Administration. It's not because I'm giving money back to the city, it's because there are water, sewer, BPNL, all of the other entities pay into that fund as well to help balance that budget. So, we encourage citizen participation. There is a particular item for community engagement that shows all of the entities that the city grants money to, so it is your opportunity to have a say as to whether those entities should continue to receive and to what level they should continue to receive. The EDC draft budget was presented to the board yesterday. It carries over a litany of CIP projects for the city, including Blakie, Agnes, again, our portion of the industrial park, our portion of the fill-in in so many areas of town. Agnes and Blakie are the ones I get the calls on the most. I do have another Sit with Sill coming, that is July 28th, location to be determined.
Is it June or July? You said July, and the slide says June.
It's June.
Okay.
It's in, it's this month, it's coming up quick already.
Okay.
If you did not read, there was a Water Control Improvement District Number Two issued a Stage Four Emergency Water Restriction. Pretty scary thought. They have said, "Don't use any of our water. We need your water." So, we are working with WCID to be able to, I don't want the community to fret, if there's a fire, we are prepared, we have plenty of water available, but this just goes to show the, the dire need, and as we move toward development, how we need to be sustainable and smart, because the aquifer, right, it's only going to be recharged a couple of times, and if it runs out, we're out. PHI Air Medical, you guys heard that maybe three council meetings ago, and you approved a budget amount. There has been a change with PHI Medical. Due to some changes in their helicopter location, our response times are now beyond what the contractual agreement is, so we will be revisiting that and bringing that back to council. Acadian Ambulance has been the subject of city-county joint discussion, and it is really, we are at a critical point in being able to provide ambulance service, not only to the residents of Bastrop, but Bastrop County. And for those residents who don't know, the county is required to provide health services under state law, and one of the things they do is engage Acadian Ambulance, and Acadian Ambulance pays a little bit to the county. The city doesn't pay anything. In fact, they often pay back when their response times are limited. They are discussing a franchise agreement so that the viability of the ambulance service can remain, and we're able to still offer an ambulance service in Bastrop. We're still deep in negotiations and are at the point of having discussions with the hospital to see what that does. That franchise agreement would essentially give Acadian Ambulance the first right of refusal, so we need to work through that. There is about a $1.6 million shortfall in the ambulance service to get to the 15-minute response time, and if nothing else, then the entities will split that $1.6 million bill, and that is a cost I'd rather not pass on to any of the residents. So, we're going to try to figure that out to a net zero. That might be it. Yes.
All right. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just have a question for our city manager. Since you brought up the PDD and your report, I would like to request that the PDD is added to our agenda on our next regular meeting.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the city manager?
All right. As I am apt to do, and you know that I read it at the beginning, that I can realign the agenda, we always get the consultants that you are paying out of here as soon as we can. So, we are going to be skipping 4E, but we are going to do the Juneteenth proclamation. Then, we're going to do 5A and B. They expect both of those presentations to be really short, and then we're going to, I want to let everyone know that 8D is pulled off of consent, so we will not be doing 8D as a part of consent. We'll be doing that as an individual consideration item, and also let you know that we will not be having an executive session tonight. So, we're kind of jumping around a few things, but always try to get the consultants out to be respectful of your tax dollar, and we, I know we've got some folks in the audience for the consent agenda, so we're going to do the Juneteenth proclamation, the two quick presentations, the consent agenda, and then we'll go back to Item 4E and try to be respectful of everyone's time. So, we are on Item 4D. We have, I have the Juneteenth proclamation, a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing June 19th, 2023 as Juneteenth Day. We have in our audience tonight a number of people from the Juneteenth Committee. I would like to turn it over to the Juneteenth Committee, and I believe Bernie Jackson, I believe you are the president of that committee, and they, rather than me reading the proclamation that I'll be reading on Saturday, they want to share with you about the events. So, Reverend Jackson, it is, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. And as they're coming, I'm going to take this opportunity to just say on my own, my own self, six years ago, I gained a friend.
Thank you.
A mayor and a member of my church, all in the same hour. I want to thank you for the friendship that you have shown me personally, but I want also thank you for being a mayor with integrity and the dedication that you've shown to the citizens of Bastrop. You said I was one of your spiritual counselors, and we spent a lot of time together with you concentrating on what's best for the citizens of Bastrop. And I think people need to know that if they don't. We appreciate the dedication, the commitment, and the integrity that you brought to this office.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
On behalf of the Juneteenth Committee, I have our Vice President here tonight, Ishmael Harris, our Secretary of Treasury, Sheila Lowe, and committee members back there that decided not to come up, Perry Lowe.
You can make them come forward. We want to see Aria anyway.
And if y'all will just stand, please. And then we have two very excellent city employees who belong to the committee also, Terry Moore and Alicia Perkins. Okay, so, we've gotten things done. I just want to personally say I'd like to invite you all out, too. All of the celebrations this, this weekend, beginning with the email reunion activity on Friday night, the car show, a lot of things are going on with the African-American Museum of Freedom Colonies with their exhibits. We're doing Saturday this year, we're doing a new thing, and we've gotten a lot of help from our partner, the City of Bastrop, so we want to thank you for all of that, and we want to invite you all out to celebrate with us. And I'm going to let the Vice President and Sheila, if they have a little bit, they want to just tell you about the activities, and then we'll get out of your way. We do have a meeting scheduled tonight, so we will be leaving shortly.
Absolutely. Understand.
Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. How are y'all? Mayor Schrader, congratulations.
Thank you.
On six great years.
Thank you.
Appreciate the support that I've had from you, and good luck on your, your ventures with your grandkids.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just be real quick about Saturday's events. We're having the parade. It's going to start at 10:30. We're going to line up at the Circa. Registration is going to be from 8:30 to 9:30. We'll be having a judging. Right now, we have a few categories that we're going to do. If more people show up, we'll add more, but we're going to look at, for the best overall category, which will be more themed towards the Juneteenth celebration. We're going to have the best video, best car, best float, best dance group, and if we have animals, we'll have a category for that as well. We have volunteers, and if anyone else would like to volunteer, we'll be meeting up at 7:30 that morning. We'll have some breakfast and coffee. We'll convene, game plan, and get everybody lined up. All right, the parade, hopefully, will have a good amount of people. Once it's over at 11:00, then we will presume to Fisherman's Park for the festivities for today, and I'll let Sheila fill in on it.
Good evening, Counsel. Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Mayor Schrader. So, this year, we are actually doing something that we haven't done in a long time, and that's celebrate Juneteenth at Fisherman's Park. And then, I was growing up, and Councilmember Lee, and Ishmael, and Perry, we used to call it the Boat Docks. We didn't call it Fisherman's Park. So, we are taking the celebration back to the docks. And we have live music lined up all day long, starting at 1 o'clock. We have Linda Green and the Soul Teens that are playing. Then, we have an artist from Smithfield that will come on at 3 o'clock. His name is Alvin L. Gay. Then, we are going to spin it up a little bit and have a live Zydego Band that's going to play at 5:00, and then we're going to end it up with a local favorite, Deezy Brown, is going to play at 7:00. We also thought that it would be great to kind of switch things up and take the stage off of the asphalt where it's going to be probably 104 on Saturday, so we're going to be on the green where the Christmas tree usually is. We're going to have, we've invited families to come and set up their lawn chairs. During Juneteenth, traditionally, we have a lot of family reunions going on, and so we've invited the families to come down to the park. We're going to let them set up tents. We've got food vendors that we see at all of our festivals around town. We have lots of kid games. We've got a train for the kids. We also have a gaming truck so that the kids can get out of the heat and go in and compete with their video games, and we're going to have a mechanical bull this year. So, it should be quite interesting on the things that we're doing, and just the new stuff that we're introducing to, to the community through the Juneteenth Festival. So, we're inviting everybody out, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, ma'am.
Since you have the whole committee here, can we get Colin to get a picture of your whole committee?
I tried. Can I just ask a question, just for clarification, because I know y'all want to make it down to the parade. Ish, you said 10:30. Is the parade at 10:00 or 10:30?
10:00. Registration is at 8:30 at Circa. You can pre-register online at the Bastrop JuneteenthCelebration.com, and if not, just get there between 8:30 and 9:30. We'll be done judging by 9:30, and so, yeah, come out and have a good time.
Thank you.
So, just in closing, thank you, Counsel, for all of your support. This is not just this year. You guys have been supporting our committee and these events for years, so we thank you, and we thank you again for the proclamation, and thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Colin's, if y'all will gather up, Colin will get you, get a picture. Do you guys want to hold the proclamation? We are going on to Item 5A, Presentation and Discussion on Land Use Assumptions and Capital Improvement Plan as it relates to the Traffic Impact Fee Study. There's a caveat. This was posted as a public hearing in the newspaper, so, but we didn't have it on the agenda as a public hearing, but we are absolutely having a public hearing, and I will open and close a public hearing. If you were here and wanted to speak on this, and you haven't filled out your paperwork yet, you, please, come forward. You can state your name and address, you can speak on this item, and you can fill out the paperwork later, but we absolutely, it was posted for a public hearing, we want to give the public an opportunity to speak. We're going to hear the presentation, and then Counsel will consider a resolution at a subsequent meeting, and so I wanted you to know how that was going, because I know many of you have scoured the paper for the public hearing postings, so I wanted to make sure you knew we were aware of that. So, I will turn it over to our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce Jake with Gimli Horn. He'll be giving the presentation on the Transportation Impact Fee Study findings.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep this quick. Thank you all for having us, Mayor and Counsel, tonight. Just a quick overview, wanted to go over the two things that we're here for tonight, the land use assumptions and the capital improvements plan. These are both inputs to come up with a maximum impact for traffic. These have already been presented to the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. They did recommend approval to Counsel at the meeting in May, so we'll cover that quick. We'll be back later. This is not the last time you'll see us. This is just to approve the study assumptions. When we come back, we'll actually have a maximum fee and talk about if Counsel would want to approve this and/or put any kind of rate in. So, that's what we'll be back to talk about when we come back. We made up some good progress on that front. We'll be back in a few weeks or a few months to do that. Like I said, we'll go quickly. There's two proposed areas in the city for this. That's a requirement in the state law. The areas for roadways can't be larger than six miles, and this only applies in the city limits. Wanted to be clear about that. Water and wastewater impact fees can apply in the ETJ or in an area called a CCN. Because of that, and the length of Bastrop along 71 or 21, we had to split that in half when we chose the Colorado River, because traffic usually stays on one side or the other. That was kind of the logical choice there. So, there's one, two areas, one's A and one's B. There are some active developments. We talked about that tonight in some of the other reports that are going on. We're trying to get ahead of the annexations that are already happening or about to happen, and so that's going to be reflected in the final report when we come back with the new city limits. What we're projecting in terms of growth and are in the assumptions, it's roughly 790 residential units per year. What that means is that the city could roughly triple in the next 10 years, and that's consistent with the rate of growth that we're seeing right now, which is pretty dang high. In addition, there's a lot of commercial going up, which is about projected to be 600,000 square feet per year. We're not saying that's the same every year. It could be a little bit less next year, a little bit more by the end. It's continuing to ramp up, so that's on an average year over the next 10 years. In terms of the projects, the capital improvements plan, this is required for the study. It looks at a 10-year window, and it's required to be updated every five years, so about the halfway point, you'd have to come back and relook at the study again. This is based on working with staff and looking at the transportation master plan of the projects in here. There's two areas, there's these fancy maps, and then there's tables to go with them. This represents roughly $100 million in projects over the next few years. Any questions on that?
Well, there you go. And one of the main reasons that we do this is, this is the foundation of the Impact Fee Study.
Correct.
And by having these projects listed and having them on our transportation master plan, one of the best things it does, it starts making us eligible for things like CBDG grants and, and other grants.
Correct.
But the more things are tied out, the better off that we are all going to be.
Yes.
And this is a part of the packet, so they can see each of the segments and see where you're talking about, and you guys also justified why you were looking at those.
Correct, yeah. These projects are, I should have said that, and there's, these are the projects that are deemed necessary to serve that growth I just talked about, so that they're supposed to line up together and make sense in the next 10 years.
But they are a line on a piece of paper.
Yep.
And so, if it happens to go through a piece of property that you own, and you're like, oh, my gosh, and that's never, ever going to, it's, it's generally trying to connect point A to point B so that traffic can flow.
Right, and these are supposed to be things about when the growth happens, so let's say if that property got sold and someone developed it, this is to try to make sure there's orderly transportation to serve development and growth over time.
This is step one.
Correct.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions for the consultant before I open the public hearing?
I wanted to make two comments, three comments, really. Number one, I've gotten questions about, is this going to apply to residents, and does this mean we're going to have a fee on our utility bill? No.
No.
No. So, don't, please, don't take from this that we're going to add anything to your utility bill. Two, he mentioned something that was critically, critically, critically important. He said, "It only applies to those things in the city limits." We have been talking, and hopefully have been drilling into your head, how it's critically important that we talk about annexation, not later on in a development agreement, as has been our history, like now, now, because otherwise, we're going to foot the bill for a longer term, and that's not where we want to be. Three, your point, it is just a line on the map. I don't want this map to get out there and somebody go, "They're going to have to buy me out because there's a line that runs through my property." Please, dear God, don't, don't. It truly is connection of a point. The line can move between A and B. It really is, the overall thought is to move people and move traffic. And then, three times the growth. Did y'all see that? I didn't feed him. He was already here before I got here.
Well, and the other thing that we want to reiterate is, you said annexation, so it's not going on your bill, we're not taking your property, and we are not annexing anyone. We do not have the ability to do unilateral annexation. That would happen with a development agreement where someone says, "We want your utilities, we want to be a part of the city," and what she's saying, in sometime, in some instances, we annex at the end of that development agreement. She's saying it's better, we need to do it at the beginning, and then that makes them part of the city. So, it's, it's a, it's, it's step one, but it's all part of a process. Is there anything else you'd like to?
No, I'll just reiterate, it's, it's to deal with growth occurring in the city and for growth to pay for itself. That's the real kind of quick summation of what this is supposed to mean.
Thank you for clarifying. Really and truly, not only is it not going on your utility bill, it's so that you are not subsidizing developers that are bringing in additional 300 houses, and they're, and everyone's paying their fair share. That, that's the purpose of doing it. With that, I would like to open the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone in the audience that is dying to talk about what we just saw? All right, I am officially closing the public hearing, and Counsel, you'll see this as a resolution, and it will be on a future agenda item, which brings us.
I had a question, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your light. Councilmember Crouch?
Two of my questions were the ones that Sylvia asked, the city manager, sorry. And I wanted to see, it seems like we're short-sighting ourselves, and then I heard you say that it was just city limits only. But I, I know that we've got a lot of growth that's going to be annexed soon. And are you taking that into consideration on this whole thing? Because we'd be crazy not to.
Yeah, so this is one of those lovely things about the limitations of state law. This is governed by Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. It specifically limits the ability of the transportation or the roadway fees to the city limits. It, I mentioned a minute ago, you have to look at it every five years. A lot of communities that are growing fast will do it more frequently to make sure that you're, if the annexations are happening and people are wanting to come into the city, then this can be looked at more frequently. There's nothing to say that you can't relook at this stuff faster than that, but we have to, by law, limit it to the city limits at the time of the study.
But we do have the ability to do, and that's why it's so important that we're tied out with Campo, because we have a master transportation plan. The county has a master transportation plan, and we try to align those with Campo. So we are looking outside of that, but to his point with state law, we can't look at it with respect to charging them a fee.
Yeah, and the reason I ask the question is because your map, maybe you can click back to it real quick. The map that showed both areas and then the two red circles for the, that, that one. So I know that there's agreements for the red, red squares already are the red areas, and, but they weren't circled, so I didn't, I wanted to make sure that, that's gotta be taken into consideration somehow, even though it's not the city.
The red portion that's not circled is because they, they have signed contracts that they are not annexed until they develop.
Which was my point about, as we revisit development agreements in the future, there's a couple of things that we've left on the table over the last several years. And one of them is, yes, how I annex and how quickly I annex, because what we have forgotten in our development agreements is that with growth, not just roads and water and wastewater, but comes police and fire, and we have consistently left them off, which is why operations and maintenance is so important. So as we are talking new agreements, we are also talking about an operation and maintenance, perhaps a fee in lieu of, because the way our development agreements are written today, it is near impossible for us to get to the end and annex, because the political pressure, I mean, you know, they'll tar and feather you out of town, because you're essentially going to tell a homeowner, "Oh, by the way, thanks. You've been limiting your home for 20 years, and now it's our turn to annex. And by the way, your mortgage payment just went up $600 a month." That's untenable. So we're gonna back up. Some of those are in red. It's too late for me to catch them, but as we move forward, absolutely.
So back when we had unilateral annexation, as, and we still had that as a municipal right before the state said that we couldn't do that anymore, previous councils, those landowners had negotiated and said, "Please don't annex me unilaterally, but I agree that when I develop, I'll be annexed," and council approved those contracts. And so those contracts exist, and we have to be faithful to those contracts.
Yeah, I, I understand all that piece of it. I just don't want to leave something out. And you also said, is it five years that you renew this?
A minimum.
Yeah, the maximum length of time is five. You can go faster.
You can go every year if you need to.
Okay. All right. That, that'll help, because I, I think we'll need to go every year.
Okay.
With, with the speed that the growth's coming here. So those, let me see if I had one more.
So there's one other, there's one other piece of information I forgot to mention. The developers know this is coming. I've been in touch with David Glenn, with the Austin Home Builders, and they would like an incremental approach. They're not opposed to it, because they know it's part and parcel of quality of life. And so when they sell a residential development, you want to be able to get in and out of there and not take your life into your own hands. For example, as you're trying to get onto 71 or come back into town from 71. So they, they expect it. It's how we execute. The other thing that's going to be a matter of policy is as we talk about affordable housing and as we talk about some of those things that are a matter of importance to the city, we're gonna have to talk about where these things don't apply, what, what's going to be exempt from a quote-unquote, quote-unquote impact fee, city-sponsored projects, for example. So that, that'll be for, that'll be for meatier discussions.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, consumers paying for it. Those are just pass it on down. Just a couple of general questions that I, I didn't get from reading the packet is, how's the fee collected? Who collects the fee? And then how, how do we spend that fee once we get it?
Great question. So per the law, it occurs, the fee collection itself occurs when the building permits are issued or approved, depending on how the, the city attorney wants to interpret that. But it's, at time of building permit is when it's collected, and then it's required to be spent within a 10-year period, which I've never worked with a city that had a problem spending that. In the area it was collected, it's those two areas, the green and purple in this case, it has to stay within the confines of that. So there's a flexibility on the city's part to figure out.
But when it's collected, it does not go into general fund. It goes into a dedicated transportation fee. It can only be spent on those roads that are included.
Correct.
Yeah. And then requirements for spending it?
The only requirement is within 10 years, and it, it's supposed to be spent on the projects that are in the, the plan itself as capital improvement projects.
Okay. All right. That was, that was my questions. Thank you very much.
All right. I'm double-checking. I don't have any lights on. I've held the public hearing. It'll be at a future meeting. We are done with 5A. Excellent.
Thank you.
We are moving on to 5B, Received Presentation on the Engineer's Intersection Improvement Traffic Analysis. And this is where the city engineer promises that everything will be fixed by next week.
(laughing) Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I would like to introduce you, Matt with Kim Lee Horn. He'll be giving a presentation on intersection improvement project. He'll go over the traffic analysis and the recommended improvements on the intersections with Highway 71 at Edward Burlison, Highway 304, Hassler, and Childers.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Matthew Gahl with Kim Lee Horn, here to talk to you tonight about what we're doing on State Highway 71. So these are the three intersections that we've been looking at, 304, Hassler, and 150, here tonight presenting our initial findings and trying to get some feedback from y'all about any sort of prioritization on these projects. I do want to note that we kind of broke these into priority projects, short-term projects and long-term projects. I'm gonna talk tonight about the priority in short-term. There's a few more long-term projects that are listed in the memo in the packet. So tonight we'll be focusing on the first two. Before we talk about the specific intersections, I just want to highlight that a lot of these improvements are gonna be focused on turn lanes. One thing that we noticed when we were watching peak hour traffic is that turn lanes were kind of being starved off by the through lanes. People couldn't get into the right turn lanes, the left turn lanes. And that's really a pinch point when we're driving on the road and we can't get into those lanes. And so we're gonna see a lot of turn lane improvements. But here at 304, the text is a little bit small on the screen here, but the projects that are in red text are priority projects. This is the southbound approach. I'm sure we've all driven through this, but the queue on that southbound approach, it's really because there's only one lane for those southbound vehicles to go east on 71. And to fix that, we actually want to add another lane under the bridge. There's about 58 feet of pavement, so we can actually squeeze five, a little bit narrower lanes under the bridge there. We can actually then combine that with extending that outside lane, and that will essentially double the capacity to go southbound to eastbound there. One good thing here is that TechStot is actually looking at implementing that restriping under the bridge with a project they're doing next year. So it's great to see some synergy there. Also here, constructing eastbound and westbound right turn lanes. The westbound one is actually being constructed here by a developer in the future, so also great to see that lineup. Moving on to Hassler here, the most significant issue we saw here at Hassler was the eastbound U-turn lane really getting starved off, and that's people making that U-turn to go to HEB. It's a really high volume. It's a little bit tricky of a project when we look at feasibility with some drainage elements there, but that's the one that we believe would have the biggest impact to traffic at the intersection. We want to make sure that people can get into that U-turn lane, and they're not sitting there behind the left turn lane, sitting on the red light. Additionally, here, we'd like to wide, propose widening the northbound approach from one lane to two lanes. One thing we see there is, since it's only one lane and slow-moving traffic, it really steals a lot of the green time there. And so if we can double the capacity on the northbound approach, we can recover some of that green time to then give back to the other approaches at the intersection. Here's some graphics of what this could look like. Also, constructing a eastbound right turn lane is one of our recommendations. Moving to the northbound side, also extending that southbound right turn lane. You see people driving in the grass, getting up to that right turn lane when they're choked off there. So we want to make sure we add that capacity. Moving over to 150 and Childers, very similar improvements, extending that eastbound U-turn lane, eastbound and westbound right turn lane, southbound right turn lane. One thing that's a little bit different on here is that we think we could get a lot of operational benefits at the intersection by consolidating the driveways there at the gas station. Right now, what we see is that people are actually breaking through the intersection to make that right turn immediately downstream. And so if we can consolidate those driveways, tighten them up, we'll actually see-
Councilmember Meyer says she's done that before.
For sure. Here's some graphics as well. So that concludes the phase one portion of this. The next steps would be to start looking at some preliminary engineering elements, looking at utility relocation needs, if there's any right-of-way needs, some more detailed cost estimates to really start moving towards design. And we're gonna focus on the priority improvements that we listed here. That's gonna be our big focus of the next step. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
So the part where council wants to know how much it costs, that's why you specifically said, "We don't know if we need to relocate utility." You don't have enough information to come with, come up with a really good guess at this point.
Correct. Right now, kind of at our feasibility level, the estimate for all of these priority and short-term improvements is the eight to $12 million range. There are a lot of challenges here, particularly with drainage. Those two U-turn lane extensions are actually right next to the trunk lines that take all the drainage down to the river, and so there could be some impacts there. But we're not to that point yet, but our preliminary estimates are eight to $12 million.
So Madam City Manager, based on this information, I would assume as council moves forward with their fiscal year '24, you'll be talking about if they want to budget going to the next, next stages and be, get to be able to answer more questions.
Yes, ma'am. There are a couple of projects that they listed there are under, the HEB, for example, we're going through a development review. They're going through a remodel and an expansion. So as much as we can capture during that process. The Edward Burlison, I'm not sure that you captured. The developers also making improvements on Edward Burlison. So I'm not sure that that's captured, but then also on that 71 frontage and a consolidation of that driveway also, where the vet is. And then in some of the areas closer by the Buckeyes, we have a probable development in the near term, and by near term, I mean 18 to 24 months. And there's some opportunity to perhaps capture some of those improvements. So knowing where we are and being able to plan for it and partner as much as we can with the development community, so we're not paying for it twice, or it's being built and then we have to undo it again.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't know which slide it's on, but I can just tell you the intersection. So the, the one coming from Burlison, we talked about the traffic trying to cross over to the gas station. There's a lot of that I see that happens when, when people are coming out of Burlison and they're doing the U-turn. There's the Taco Cabana right there. And sometimes that's holding up the U-turn traffic, because they are trying to cross over, over to that, that little shopping area there. So that I wanted to point out for future consideration, as well as the HEB. So I'm, I'm guilty of it. We make that U-turn, and we want to get over to that HEB, and we sit there and traffic backs up in that U-turn, because everyone's trying to wait till the last car comes through so they can cross over the two lanes. So a consideration for alleviating that issue at both of those U-turns. And then as I was coming in today at Hassler, I come through there every day. But of course, we were having this conversation, so I took note. That huge, like, I don't think it's a sidewalk, but as you're sitting here, there's like a lot of concrete there. I don't know if that's a sidewalk or not. But right at the U-turn, where the, the report shows that a lot of the queuing traffic occurs, as a matter of fact, that lane was completely empty today, and there was a ton of traffic behind me with their blinkers on, but they couldn't get to that U-turn. I was wondering how, I just don't see us narrowing the, it's already narrow right there. So I was wondering how we were gonna extend that, that, that turning lane out for the U-turn because of all the concrete that's right there. Is, so is all of that being considered, and that's what you, you guys are gonna bring back to the table, of how that's all actually gonna work?
Correct. In phase two, that's what we'd be looking at, kind of the feasibility challenges, any sort of utilities, drainage, other structures, some right-of-way. There's some kind of monuments for some of these stores. So all those things are things that we'd look at as we move into preliminary engineering.
I, I mean, I, of course, trying to, especially right there at HEB, trying to make the U-turn as convenient, so you don't have to sit in all the traffic at the light. You can make the U-turn, hopefully, you know, God willing, get over the three lanes. But I also think that that's a hindrance to the traffic and a holdup, and dangerous, because you're trying to, you're basically stopping all traffic so you can get over and turn in there, and then, of course, send the queue. So, yeah, I'll be looking forward to those three areas and figuring out how that's gonna be alleviated. Those problems are gonna be alleviated.
Is that a, an issue with timing at Hassler? Because I've, the light at Hassler is the one light I've ever in my life come to red under a bridge. It, it's never green. It's red. Is that why you're taking the U-turn?
No, or at Hassler?
Yeah, to come to the HEB. Is that why you're taking the U-turn?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because of the light?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, definitely. Because of the light, if, if you can get over there. But again, then you're holding up traffic in the U-turn because of the incoming traffic going west. So alleviating that issue for the people that are just really trying to make a U-turn so they can go back west. And then, and then again, at Hassler, or at Burlison, for people that are doing the same thing, to try to cross over to that Taco Cabana.
Certainly things that we can look at a little bit more.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. So my question goes back to 304, Burlison Crossing, and I noticed that we have a statement that says, "Providing the dedicated right turn lane reduces the likelihood of rear-ending." So I'm leaving Lowe's, and you're saying we're gonna put a right, right turn lane in for westbound.
Correct.
So, and I agree with that. However, when I make a right turn, I'm stopped because there are people that are backed up trying to get into Chick-fil-A that are blocking that lane. So then you get a block up, and I actually witnessed a rear-ending there for people trying to get into Chick-fil-A. So how do we resolve, the Chick, Chick-fil-A is the big issue with the, the traffic entrance, and their entrance is so short. It's really hard, I mean, you have no other option than go down and around, but the traffic builds up, and then you've got people shooting over in front of cars, trying to get in the left lane. So how, what would we do with that?
And that's something that I'd like to actually go out there and take a look at, and if I can, I can work with your staff to get you an answer to that question. That's okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Crouch?
I, I had a question on Highway 95. So is that not included in your traffic analysis?
Correct. And the reason we did not include that is that TechStot is actually in, currently in process on doing some traffic studies there. And so to not duplicate effort and kind of duplicate funds being expended, that we focused on these three intersections. But TechStot is actually in the middle of doing some traffic studies.
And in all fairness, council gave them the direction, and, and previous councils had identified the specific intersections, and it was included in the budget. So they only looked at the ones we told them to look at.
I, I thought we had asked at some point, I don't know when this started, but I thought we asked at some point to look at Highway 95 for the Farm Street Village area. So that's a totally separate thing.
Totally separate thing.
Okay. That's what I just wanted to make sure about that. And I, I get this. And then you're, I hope you're communicating with the developer at Highway 71 and Burlison Crossing for that, because that's, a lot of that work's captured, like the city manager said.
Correct, yes. And we're working with staff on those items.
Okay. Thank you.
Great job. Council, any further questions? It's, this is information only, and you can start thinking, looking in your, shaking out the couch cushions, looking for eight to $12 million to get those all fixed. So good luck with, I know you'll get that taken care of. All right, staff and board reports. Thank you very much. Great job. Appreciate the information. If you're interested in these photos or the details about the information, it's all in the packet, so it's available for folks. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
We are done with citizen comments. Council, I am pulling item 8D off of the consent agenda. Does anybody on council want anything else pulled off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants something pulled from consent? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants something pulled from consent?
Yes, please. Mayor, I would like the, I don't have the consent number in front of me, but the one dealing with Pine Forest because I need legal advice on if abstention needs to happen or not. And we haven't had legal advice on that yet.
Okay. That is, let me make sure, that is Item 8E. We are going to take a really quick recess so that you can visit with Allen, with our city attorney, and then we'll come back and do the consent agenda. So it is 7:41. We're going to take a three, four-minute break. We are in recess. Come back. Who are we missing? Kevin? Chief, if you'll find Councilmember Plunkett and Crouch, we'll get this show on the road. Might have to look for them in the bathroom?
Yes.
Connie, I'm so used to seeing that, being seen, noticed, and I totally forgot about that dead number.
Yeah, it's because there's so many other things going on.
Yeah, for sure.
We have a quorum. I guess we could go. Well, except she's going to abstain. I said, we have a quorum, but she's going to, well, actually, she's not going to abstain from the others, so. All right, there's one. There they are. All right. All righty. Council, we're going to also pull Item 8E and, but we will take both of the items, 8D and 8E, immediately after the consent agenda. So Madam Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda without 8D and 8E.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8B, consider action to approve city council minutes from the May 22nd, 2023 Leadership Summit and May 23rd, 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-86 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into certain agreements related to the sale of certain real property located at the 2,000 block of Mill Street Building Block 142, east of Water Street and the 2,000 block of South Street Building Block 143, east of Water Street. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-85 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving the expenditure of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation Funds for a target industry analysis in an amount not to exceed $50,000, repelling all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action.
No, ma'am. You're skipping to 8F.
Item 8F, yes. Item 8F, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-87 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, consenting to the creation and division of Garfield Municipal Utility District, providing for an open meetings clause and providing for an effective date. Item 8G, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-89, approving appointment of Jacob Danan, J.D., as Associate Municipal Judge, Bastrop Municipal Court, City of Bastrop, and approving a contract to provide services attached as Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
And council, for your, 7:45 when we went back into regular session. And council, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Lee.
Second.
Tie goes to the lady, Councilmember Meyer. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Council, we're going to immediately take 8D and 8E and that will conclude, then we'll go back to four and we'll be done and we'll be able to do the adjournment before we go to the reception is what I'm trying to get done here. On Item 8D, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14 of the Bastrop Building Block Code, Article 2.4, Administration, Section 2.4.001(c)(1) and (4), non-conforming uses and structure; D, hanging non-conforming use (1)(A), (I), (B), and (E), and providing, finding a fact, repealer severability, codification, effective date, proper notice, and meeting. Council, one of the main reasons that this one was pulled is because it's the first reading of the ordinance and the first reading of an ordinance can't be on consent. It has to be considered as an individual consideration. And I believe we've had some changes and I'm going to turn things over to Madam City Manager and let her visit about this before, so you know exactly what you're voting on.
Yes, ma'am. The Planning Commission took up the non-conforming use. We heard it about two months ago, sent it to council. Council remanded it back and asked for further clarification. The Planning Commission took several actions and there's a corrected ordinance in front of you. What was uploaded onto the web or into your packet was, I think, the, the version several meetings ago. Essentially, I'm, I'm going to jump to the main changes if I can get to Allen's email here. Couple of major changes. So if you recall, non-conforming, we were trying to make the B-3 code not punitive for structures that are already, structures and uses that are already in place. Before, you had six months and then your use and/or structure was considered non-conforming and you'd have to now comply to the B-3 code. The Planning Commission and the council found that both of those were extremely punitive and that was not the intent of the code. So there have been some amendments, namely, an application can be administratively approved if you look like the surrounding built environment. We initially gave you an offer of 200 feet from the surrounding, meaning if you were trying to rebuild your porch, for example, and it was going to exceed a certain size, so long as you looked like everything around you within 200 feet, you would be okay to do it and we could approve that administratively. Planning Commission and, and our last discussion at council said that probably should be greater and so Planning Commission decided on 500 feet. So long as you look like the built environment around you, 500 feet, you are okay and can rebuild. The other issue is increasing or expanding the characteristics that render a structure non-conforming. So the Planning Commission said, we usually base things on value and not square footage, but because values are fluctuating so crazily and, you know, you could end up with only being a small microscopic piece of what you originally had, we ended up working on square feet. The Planning Commission said, you've, you're able to do that plus 50% not to exceed. So if you had an 80%, an 1,800 square foot structure that was damaged and you need to do something else to it, you could rebuild that 1,800 feet plus 50%. And that is in specific, the specific example I used was a, a home that had a carport that they wanted to enclose for a mother and disabled son. And under the current code, they would not have been able to do that because it was an expansion of the existing non-conforming. So Planning Commission said, nope, that's crazy. That's not what we said and that's not what we meant. So yes, they are able to do that. Talked about six months going to 18 months and then that determination can be made by the Director of Development Services. So some administrative relief in there as well. And then we talk about, and we further clarify, that construction should be to current building standards, but uses and structures still okay to do. We're not going to ask you to do anything crazy. And the active real estate acquisition of the subject property or nearby property by a government agency shall not render a use or structure non-conforming. And I will let Councilmember Kirkland speak to that because that was one of the items that was in discussion, but essentially trying to ease the, the punitive nature of the non-conforming. And when we adopted the B-3, the city became non-conforming.
Council, the other thing I will remind you is that this is the first reading of the ordinance and so your mayor-elect Nelson will decide whether they want to put it on the consent or put it for individual consideration. And even if it is on consent, you'll have the ability to pull it off for individual consideration and you will have a second discussion before it, before it is actually adopted as an ordinance. So are there any questions? Are you clear that you are talking about ordinance number 2023-11 and this is the first reading only? I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Meyer.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, I'd like to request amendment of the, the motion. First is the, I would like to request that we approve with the new attachment that Allen sent us via PDF file today. Second, that one of the items that went through P&amp;Z on Item E1 is that the, the rebuilt structure after a disaster could be as large as 150% the size of the original structure. And then last is C1. P&amp;Z changed this from six months to 18 months and I support that. So my request is that we add those three things to the motion.
Madam Manager, was that, that was the points that you were trying to go over?
Yes, the 50% item is mentioned in A1 or A lowercase i, no structural alteration of over 50% of the total square footage as determined. I think that may capture it, but.
Well, I, I disagree because that particular one is about expanding a non-conforming use into the rest of the building.
Correct, that's Item D. Yes, yes.
And so that, that one doesn't end up capturing it.
So you're wanting to specify the, a natural disaster?
Well, it's, there's one.
Under structure itself, under E1.
That's under E1, yes.
Got it, got it, got it.
All right. So the second was Councilmember Plunkett. We have to go back to, to Councilmember Meyer. Are you okay with those amendments?
I, I'm fine. I, I will make the motion with the amendments.
And Councilmember Plunkett, are you agreeable to the amendments?
Yes, definitely.
All right. I, so I have a motion and a second on the floor, but I have a question from Councilmember Crouch.
Yes, I, I wanted to make sure Councilmember Kirkland was requesting the alternate version that Allen provided, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's what we're voting on, is the alternate version.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, council, are you clear of what you're voting on? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously and you will be having the second reading of ordinance 2023-11 at a future meeting. We're going to Item 8E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-88 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Bastrop and Bastrop County as Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Council, I want to give a shout out to Andre over at the county, also Commissioner Beckett and Commissioner Hamner for working with the city manager and I. And you saw a note in your packet that said if they made any amendments yesterday that we would be addressing those. The county commissioners' court unanimously approved the document as it was presented, which means what you had in that packet is exactly what we are taking into consideration. Councilmember, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland? Oh, he had his light on, I thought he wanted to talk. I am happy to entertain a motion. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from.
Second.
Oh, man. I, I can't win on this. I, okay, she said, give it to Jimmy. So it's Kirkland and Crouch, Madam Secretary. If you would please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Meyer?
Due to a possible conflict, I will abstain.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes 4-0 with one abstention and that is approved and that has been a long time coming. And I'd also like to thank the city manager for her hard work on this. This was something I really wanted to get done and I'm appreciative that we have that completed. Council, it was brought to my attention that someone filled out a citizen comment and we didn't, and the Madam Secretary is giving me a face, but we'll find out what happened. But Dax Havelak, if you would please come forward, state your name and address and you will have three minutes.
Howdy, I'm Dax Havelak. Address 779 Peach Creek in Rosanke, Texas. It's just south of Bastrop, but it's still part of Bastrop. All right, so let's start off. I'm one of the secretary board members for Bastrop Pride, so I want to thank all the staff, all the city folks, those that attended and those that participated in the process of getting paperworks, specialty variances and all that through the process. It was buttery smooth. And then to me, watching this video in a couple of weeks, thank you to all the businesses that participated, just with the simple vendorships, simple flying, putting flyers in their windows. I just want to thank everyone that just generally participated. Bastrop Pride is an expression of ourselves, of who we are. Bastrop is growing, is getting exceedingly large for what it is. And from our meetings and all that, there is a spirit to Bastrop. There is, you know, an endeavor not to be as cookie cutter as some of the other surrounding counties. And I think part of that is having proud, having pride, having the ability to be who you are, be who you, who you want, who you want to be, wear some fun colors, not necessarily be, you know, geriatric gray in housing. But in addition to that, we've had our music festivals, a lot of from the discussions that I've heard from city council and from other members of the city. Music is Bastrop. It's, we're kind of east of Weird from Austin and as part of that, as part of Bastrop Pride, we're definitely taking on music expression. And even as we saw tonight with trumpet performances, that's fun. That's something that we're going to do and something that we're going to go forward with in our futures. It's, it's music. And then from my side is, you know, the 790 residences that were going to be built over the next steps, or next several months. And the, and I work for the company that will be building those homes. Bastrop is growing. Pride will grow with it. Our homes are going to grow with it. So I'm excited, similar to what you've said, last year, we had about 300 participations from our first Pride event. This Pride event, or some of our vendors cleared 300 unique purchases. purchases. So, we've had an overwhelming amount of more people. So, similar to Bastrop growing in the next, well, quadrupling is what I'm expecting from my side. Pride will grow linearly with twice, three times, four times going forward into the future. Eighteen seconds left. So, I think all of y'all will be back in business and talking more for all our permits and plannings and everything next time. And of course, we'll be reaching out to, I guess, your replacement to speak at our next events. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. All right, Council, we're going back to Item 4E, and before we go to the reception, we'll adjourn so you don't have to come back. That was the goal. So, we're on Item 4E. This feels really weird, recognition of outgoing me.
So, Mayor, before you leave the dais and before we adjourn, we have a few items for you that we'd like to present. So, if you would come... Come off the dais, and Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
And so, Mayor, I've been to many events lately where someone has said goodbye to you, and so this is our opportunity. And I wanted to say what an honor it's been to serve with you. And it's a short time for me, you know, the one year, but you mentioned all of the other council members that you served with, and it was an honor for them to serve with you as well. When you were elected and when you became our mayor, you were the person that we needed. And God knew that, and He put you at the right place to serve in the way that you have. And you have blessed us and honored us, and we thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm really thinking about my parents. Thank you. They have some very, very... Council, would you guys come down and sit here?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Give me this. So, you're telling me you could do a part of the team?
Turn that on, yeah. Let's have a good seat, yeah.
Can you get this?
Mayor, I have some comments I'd like to bake, too, if you don't mind.
The floor is yours.
So, I... We signed your card, and you haven't read it yet, but I'm gonna read it to you and everybody in Bastrop, because it perfectly describes who you are.
Be nice, be nice.
It says, "You've got a real way with people, you give your best, and help others to be their best. That makes the people around you feel pretty lucky and very grateful. Thank you for doing what you do so well."
Thank you.
And as I was coming home on my drive, I was thinking what I would say. And I think one of the... I mean, we could talk about the 50 million events you've been to, and the many wonderful things that you've brought to Bastrop as our mayor. You and I have had our own personal discussions about how I feel about you personally, but what I wanted you to know was how you impacted my life and my son's life, I'm being honest to you. Growing up here in Bastrop, and when you grew up in a small town as a child, you were always like, "As soon as I graduate, I'm leaving. I'm not staying in this town." But for some reason, Jesus kept bringing me back, and I couldn't figure out why. And then I had my son, and my mom passed, and my grandmother passed, and then I got my degrees, and I'm still like, "Why am I not in New York in a $1.5 million apartment?" But I went through the union and became an activist in Austin, and even though I slept here, I did everything I was gonna do in Austin. And when I wanted to become active in Bastrop, I really didn't know where to start, or who the players were, as I call them. And had I not run into you at that cemetery event that I wasn't gonna go to, and I popped up at the last minute, and you were there, and then Manager Lindomba were there, and I said hi, and that began where I am now, sitting on the dais. And through that interaction, I've been able to serve my community more than I ever had in the 52 years of life that I've been here. I've also been able to show my son what it means to give of your time and your service to your community. He would always say, "You don't get paid for that. That's not about getting paid, it's about you having the heart and compassion for the city." I appreciate you always being upfront. The mayor and I, we rarely... I don't think we rarely disagree, but when we do, we do so in a way that's respectful of each other's opinions. You have brought a lot of understanding to things that I may not have thought of, which is one thing I'm gonna miss very much with you being on the dais. But you always gave me a different perspective of looking at things, and I was always open to hearing that perspective. So, I just want you to know that I've known you through P&amp;Z probably now six, seven years. I wish that I could have served with you longer, but I'm so grateful and thankful that I did get to serve with you for this year, because you've just taught me so much, and you keep... You actually keep me very grounded. Sylvia's here now to do that, and Lala bumped me every now and then, but I'm gonna miss having you sitting two rows down from me to take you, and I appreciate you. And I have something for you.
Oh, my goodness.
It's not a real Tiffany gift, but it's Tiffany colored.
Yeah, you're so kind.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Lee and I have a relationship where I had on sunglasses the other day, and she goes, "Ooh, are they Tiffany?" And I said, "No, sweetie, they're prescription and Costco." We have a different perspective on things. Councilmember Plunkett, your light was on?
Well, I always hate following Cheryl, because she's so much more... Yes. She's such a better... So much better speaker than I am. And I feel very inadequate in saying how important you have been to my service. We've been serving together for six years since you became mayor and went on the EDC, and I've learned so much. I can't think of a single time we've met that I didn't walk away feeling smarter. And, you know, Mr. Nelson, you've got some big shoes to fill. Hopefully, they won't be on heels.
With duct tape tonight.
You'll fall down. But I just... It's been an honor to serve with you, and I've treasured your friendship and your advice and just about everything we've done. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much, Kevin. I've... We've been friends a very long time, and we always will be. Like, I'm not dying, I'm just not gonna do this anymore. Councilmember Crouch?
I just wanted to thank you for all of the time that you spend. This is a very demanding job that we all have doing this, and yours is more... The most demanding of all of us, because you attend all the functions. And it's... I've supported it and... Supported it. I've supported and respected you from the day that you ran the first time, and I really appreciate what you've done for Bastrop. So, it's an awesome thing that you've done. You were in the right place at exactly the right time, and we're a lot better for it. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you very, very much. Oh, yeah. Grandkids rock. They are the very, very best. I want to say how much I've enjoyed working with Mr. Borquez, what a wonderful city manager we have with city manager Correa. You guys are in great hands to move forward. Several people have asked me why I ran for mayor, and it's because I was driving back from Big Ben, and my husband said, "You should run for mayor." And we will be celebrating our 20th wedding anniversary on October 11th. We will not be in the city of Bastrop. We will be somewhere else, and I just want to thank him. He made a comment the other day. Many of you know that he was single for a very long time. He was divorced for 30 years and said he would never get remarried, and we dated for five years, and in October, we will have been married for 20 years. And I said to him the other night, as we always do on Sunday, "What nights am I gonna be home, and what nights am I not gonna be home?" And he said, "Well, being a bachelor for 30 years was training for you to be mayor." So, he has eaten a lot of dinners alone, and I want to publicly thank him for his support. He... Councilmember Lee, you mentioned keeping you grounded. He is my biggest cheerleader and my, trust me, harshest critic. I hit the door, and he lets me know if I maybe should have done something a little bit different. So, I love him. I am very appreciative of my grandkids, especially staying hanging in till the bitter end. My daughter Lisa was... She graduated from Bastrop High School, her dad graduated from Bastrop High School, her kids are going. They are the reason that I wanted to serve and give to this community. We want their grandkids to want to be a part of Bastrop, Texas. It's a fabulous place to be. You have a very, very bright future. And with that, we have cake, punch, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
It is 8:13, and we're adjourned.